Welcome to our Board of Education meeting. The newest and most influential members of the class. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, welcome. It's a big night tonight, that's for sure. We begin as we always do in our administrative remarks. And Ms. Culligan, please.
Please, ma'am. I want to talk a little bit about the teacher administrator certification. Thank you, Madam President.
Right, ma'am. I want to talk a little bit about administrator and teacher certification. As you can see on the human resource agenda screen, there are different types of teacher certification. In 2000, the board of regents approved new certification requirements for classroom teachers. This change included the creation of the initial and professional certification, which was effective in February 2004. The old titles, provisional and permanent, still apply to pupil personnel services, but not teachers entering the field. The initial certification we are working with today is a secondary-level certification. Teachers and administrators have five years after receiving this certification to run their professional certification. They have to meet the following requirements to do so. They have to have a master's degree, and they have mentor experience, three years of paid teaching experience, and they have to complete three workshops: child abuse, school violence, intervention and prevention, and DASO. At the present time, we have three administrators, eighteen teachers, and seven teaching assistants with initial certification. And currently, one or two teachers whose certification inspires an honest. The other certification we have is professional. Professional is issued as an advanced level certificate. It is continuously valid with completion and documentation of required professional development hours in a five-year professional development cycle. We are-- last year, the state changed the CTEA requirements. It was previously was 175 hours, now it's 100 hours of professional development, and so we're working with the teachers on those new regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Sounds like you've got to be busy. Okay, Ms. Goss, how are you doing?
Great, thank you. Good evening. I have one update, and it's from New York State regarding a curriculum change. So, the New York State Education Department recently presented the board of regents with revised ELA and MAF standards for their consideration and approval. So, the genesis of these changes came from concerns that we've altered in the last few years regarding the Common Core standards, and State Ed reports that the revisions are based on and really incorporate feedback from focus groups and from surveys that were administered throughout the state. They also thought it was important to tell us that these new standards were developed with the input of hundreds of educators as well. So, here are some of the proposed changes for the ELA standards. There are a reduction in the number of anger standards. The grade level text complexity is also redesigned, and there is a theme that has been added in on lifelong practices of readers and writers. Some proposed MAF changes include clarification of the existing standards, and that really means making sure that the language is clear, so that educators across the state know what it is that the state is trying to say throughout their standards, and providing new exemplars for educators to use in their instruction. Another change in terms of MAF includes moving standards to new grade levels, again, to address the developmental appropriateness, and the collapsing and removing of standards, and the addition of new standards that really look at vertical alignment. So, for the curriculum that is present in a particular grade, does it make sense with the grade of bottom and the grade prior? And also, within grade sequence, so is there coherence throughout a particular grade level? So, once the Board of Education approves these standards, it is on the June agenda. State Ed will develop guides documents and professional development opportunities throughout the state to assist districts in implementation of these standards. So, we'll be working through the summer and into next year, helping educators unpack these standards, and we'll make sure that we implement them in accordance with any timeline provided by New York State. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goss. I appreciate that. Hey, Mr. Carlson, how are you doing today?
I'm well. Good evening. First, I want to thank the community for their support of the 2017-18 budget. The pass last Tuesday, we had a pass rate of 68 percent, which is a pretty remarkable mark. However, we had a participation rate of just 8 percent of registered voters. That's somewhat concerning. Again, very impressive that we had a 68 percent pass rate, but some concern that only 8 percent of our community residents are coming out to vote. I also want to thank the community for supporting Proposition Number Two, for bus purchases that allow us to purchase new vehicles to put in place next September, newer, safer, more fuel-efficient vehicles. We're very excited about that, so again, thank the community for your support. And finally, I wanted to update the board. We hosted a third tabletop exercise, which, for those of you who aren't aware, tabletop exercise is a mock scenario, an emergency response scenario. This district takes emergency response and safety very seriously. So, we hold these mock trainings to see how we would react to a real-life scenario. There were about forty people who attended, including administrators, teachers, custodians, SROs, and support staff. A member from every department within the district was represented, so that's also very important. And the scenario that was presented at this tabletop is the most extreme, and it's the worst-case scenario that anyone could ever imagine. It was based on events leading up to an active shooter scenario, but this tabletop allowed us to start at the beginning, rather than the actual response. So, there were certain cues leading up to what had transpired, which allowed us to think critically about, you know, the warning signs that we may need to look into, and how to actually prevent this scenario from taking place as opposed to the response. So, it was a great experience. Again, we take safety very seriously here, and we participate in these table tops, so that we are prepared in the event of an emergency. So, again, it was a great experience, and I'm sure that everyone got it, you know, so we was able to take something away from it. And that concludes my comments.
Thanks, Mr. Carlson. And Dr. Henning, how are you? Welcome aboard.
Sidney D. Duncan. Board trustees. Just a few comments, and to echo what Mr. Carlson just said about acknowledging that our community is responsible for our board and for our budget passing, and we appreciate that, as well as the passing of the bus proposition. As you know, living in the northeast, the buses take quite beating, and we need a replenishment fleet cycle that really does acknowledge that our buses transport many children, so we want to thank you for all of your support of our school budget, as well as supporting the school budget. I mean, the bond that, you know, I think a lot of you see evidence of that bond in, you know, in full action, you know, whether you pass the E-Star, you see the addition going on, you see the work happening at JFK, and there'll be some other HDAC work that's going on across the district. So, I want to, again, thank our public and the community and our taxpayers for allowing it to happen. Certainly, by the beginning of the school year, we will have another ribbon-cutting ceremony, again, to thank you for all of your support of-- to ensure that our children are, you know, transferring through or traveling through upgraded buildings that really support and represent, you know, who we-- our aspirations for them as young people. So, thank you again for that. Our own Dr. Jamboor was honored last night at the Westchester Putnam School Boards Association as the Board of Education Distinguished Service Award honoree, so we want to acknowledge him and thank him for all of his tireless work as a board member and board president in the school district. A number of us were present to also share our thanks for all of your hard work, Dr. Jamboor. The junior prom was an amazing event. On May 12th, a lot of really well-dressed young people came out for that event, and they had a great time, and there were-- you know, they behaved the way they were supposed to behave, which was appropriately. So, that's one of a number of really amazing hearing events that are about to happen. I know that senior prom is underway as well, and I look forward to attending that as well. The Harlem Wizards event, sponsored-- co-sponsored by the Brewster Education Foundation and the PTA of Wells, was an amazing event last Saturday. Lots of people, it's a packed house, lots of fun, and obviously, all those proceeds go to really good cause, so I thank you for both of those organizations for making that possible. The Brewster Community Learning Center will be announcing its new summer courses soon, so we hope that you take advantage of some of those, ranging from yoga to Tai Chi to meditation, to gardening, so there are a whole array that we hope that a lot of people sign up for, and those are the ones for adults. We also have an offering with-- through the YOCA for some summer clubs or summer camps that are underway, and we certainly are very happy to be able to offer those. The Strategic Coherence Planning Team continues to meet and to work through what that plan means to the district, and that embodies our aspirations for all of our children. As they travel through the system, we want them all to lead to be successful in life, work, and future learning, so that work continues, and you'll be seeing more evidence of that. We also look forward to hearing Ms. Hoiler introduce the top ten. That includes our salutatorium and our valutatorium, so that's going to be very exciting to hear that. And finally, I just want to thank our Board of Education for its tireless work and efforts in making sure that we all are focused on important work, and you have been tireless advocates for the school system, and I don't think you get the credit you deserve, so thank you.
Thank you so much. So, yes, thank you, Mr. Carlson, and thank you, Dr. Henning, for acknowledging the support that we've gotten from the community for our budget, and of course, the bonds that preceded it. We wouldn't be where we are today in Brewster without your support and your help. Thank you. Tonight, ironically, I wanted to begin a conversation that's big, actually, because at the end of the year, we look at our progress, our accomplishments. Certainly, those of you who are in the top ten, if you look at your GPAs, taking out to the fourth decimal place, and be proud of that. And the interesting but ironic thing is, as we're moving forward, we will probably not be looking at success in the same way in the years to come. So, we used to do the three Rs, and we looked for reading, writing, or listening, and your grades there. Then, now, we're learning about the four Cs: collaboration, communication, critical thinking, and creative problem solving. That's about all that I know about the four Cs, but I'm learning. And we're learning to assess progress and growth in a different way. We will not have the same old metrics anymore to guide us, and that's what the conversation is going to turn into a couple of weeks from now, when we start to review this very, very first year of the coherence plan that you've heard us talk about so much. Certainly, grades are still there, and they're not going to go away, really, but the picture has gotten much bigger, and if you use the example of videography, pixels per square inch, well, there are many, many more pixels per square inch now, reviewing the growth and development of our children, and the Strategic Coherence Plan is going to show you that. So, when we talk about critical thinking, for example, we're going to have to challenge ourselves, A, to understand what is critical thinking, and then, B, what's the evidence of that, and C, how is it similar or different as you go from building to building to building across the whole campus? That conversation is the one that we are up to here with this year, getting ourselves on a very new and qualitatively different page. We don't have the same old ABCDs or the numeric scores to guide us. We are really asking ourselves bigger questions. For example, all of you went to kill a mockingbird. You did a book report. It got a grade, A, B, C, D, hopefully not over than that, and then you walked out of the class and you said-- I know, I had my challenges all the time, but to be honest with you though. So, you felt done when the book report was done, and you got the grade. Well, today, we might be asking different issues, all right? Forget about who the author was, who the main character was, whether the bird represented or not. We might be trying to bring bigger truths out of this, and we might be asking the students what are the bigger truths in this story? That's critical thinking. That's talking about in a bigger fashion. And frankly, if you're as old as I am, you're just not used to looking at the world in that polychromatic way, more pixels per square inch. So, the reason why I'm bringing it up tonight is because two weeks hence, or whenever we get back to this conversation about the Strategic Coherence Plan, you're going to be hearing a bunch of dedicated educators talking to us on how we did this year in a brand-new world of reckoning, learning, and progress. And frankly, I'm looking forward to it, and I hope tonight we kind of crack the ice to go there. Okay, on a more exciting level, are you helping us out tonight? All right, then. Welcome to Monica. Thank you, Ms. Goss, for being here.
Hi, thank you for having me. Currently, at the high school, we are working on many important things. We are currently starting the process for the election for student governments for next year, as well as the general board for next year, and we are looking forward to prom, senior prom. We're all very excited. June 12th, there will be a senior picnic, which will take place at the compound, and there are many activities, and it's going to be a lot of fun, as well as June 16th, there is going to be a senior walk through all the buildings that we've been educated in, which is potentially going to become a school tradition, and so we're very excited to be the first year at those, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, seriously, the moment you've been probably waiting for, when we do our presentations, is that all of us are going to help out tonight? Thank you.
So, this year, our top ten was very close. In fact, our top seven were less than one point, dividing all of them together. So, it was incredibly competitive, and I have to tell you, it is the nicest group of individuals I've had the pleasure of sitting with. They were just, you know, inspiring, and that's one of the questions I ask them. What really inspires you? What inspires you about the high school? What are you taking away from here, you know, not just four years of a great education? What really are you going to remember when you look back at Brewster High School? So, from here, I'm going to tell you where everybody is going to school, what they're going for, what their ambitions are, and what really inspired them about Brewster High School. So, number ten is Nolan Curley, with a 99.19 grade point average. So, Nolan is going to George Washington University for math and economics. He would like to be a financial analyst in the future. One of the things that he's going to take away from here and that he's going to remember forever is the passion of his teachers, particularly Mary Hoey and Antonio Francine. So, good luck to them. Number nine, Colleen Fennessy, with a 99.39 grade point average. She's going to Lehigh University for math. One of the things she talked about with math and what really inspired her was how complicated things can become simple over time, which is very true. She is an avid Yankee fan, and she color codes everything. It's very true. One of the things she's going to take away from here is the passion and the love that Larry Maggiato had for math, and it's one of the things that made the connection for her with the high school and with math in general, that he loves it so much, and she's going to ask all the teachers here and the custodians, so. Number eight is Faye Filana, with a 99.824 grade point average. Faye is going to Yale University. Her major is going to be political science and global affairs, where she will eventually become a lawyer, a great lawyer someday. What is she going to take away here at Brewster? How to stand up for other people and how to really push the empathy among the student body. One of the things that might surprise you about Faye is she's an active member of our STEM team, and she's interested in many cultures, so congratulations. Number seven, Mackenzie Quinn, with a 100.035 grade point average. Mackenzie is going to King's College in London and will major in psychology, and hopefully, she will be a research psychologist in the near future. One of the things that she found that she was going to take away from Brewster High School is the importance of getting involved in making something happen and not waiting for it to happen to you. So, congratulations. Number six, Georgia Borshit, 100.369. Georgia will be going to the University of Buffalo. Her major will be nursing, and her dream is to be a physician's assistant. What is she going to take away from Brewster? Friendships that come and go, but the memories will stay with her always. One of the things that's unusual about Georgia is that she listens and collects alternative rock music, so congratulations. Duncan Russell, number five, 100.446. Duncan will be attending West Point. His major will be engineering, and his dream after West Point is to do five years of active military duty, and then who knows what the world will have for him. What will he take away from Brewster High School is that ROTC experience, and that doing something different, always being pushed to do something different. What is something unusual? He's really a big football and lacrosse fan, and he does scale models for hockey, so congratulations. Number four, Jacqueline Benvenuto, 100.472. Jacqueline will be attending Villanova University in the fall, and she will be majoring in business, and her dream is to become an actuary. What will she take away from Brewster? That help is always there if you ask for it, and that you just have to reach out and ask somebody, and they will always be there to help you. What is something unusual? She plays field hockey, track, and she is an active member of the Brewster chapter of Students Against Cancer, so congratulations. Number three, Jack Guido, 100.712. Jack will be attending Syracuse University in the fall, and his major will be engineer, electronical-- electric engineer, I'm sure I just butchered that. His dream is to be an engineer like his older brother. He, obviously, for those of you who don't know, is a very gifted athlete. He is hoping to walk on at Syracuse University to play football, and he will be playing lacrosse. Number two, Amber Krench, 100.909. Amber will be attending Cornell University, where her major will be arts and science or maybe pre-med. I'm not sure. It's pre-med. What's her dream? To be some sort of a doctor, most likely a brain surgeon. For Amber, in the broad aspect of Brewster High School, it's the memories, it's the singing, it's the art, it's going hard in gym. She's a gifted athlete also. She's very interested in leadership and pushing yourself to be-- to go outside of your comfort zone. Something that would surprise you about Amber is she loves seventies classic rock, and that she's a naturalist, so congratulations. Number one is Nancy Madjar. Nancy is going to George Washington University. She is majoring in biology, and she hopefully will be a physician's assistant at the end of all of this. One of the things that she will take away from Brewster is the closeness she experiences-- she experienced with her teachers, particularly Mrs. Hollik and Mr. Maggiato. What surprises-- what would surprise you about Nancy is that she's very into health and fitness, and every summer, she has the opportunity to stay with her grandmother in Lebanon for the summer, and that's what she'll be doing this summer also, so congratulations. And that's our top ten.
Thank you, Ms. Hoiler. Could I just say something before you introduce this?
Yeah.
This next recognition, the Seal of Bilinguality recognition, is another way in which a number of our young people have displayed their talents and their abilities to speak multiple languages, not just to speak them, but to write them and to speak them fluently. I want to acknowledge Ms. Karen Dakin and the Modern Language Department. Could you please stand up, the department that is responsible for this? New York State instituted five additional pathways for graduation, five additional ways for students to show their talents beyond the passing of various regents, and the Seal of Bilinguality is one of those pathways that recognizes that speaking multiple languages is an asset. And so, students, these students will receive certain things during their graduation ceremony that Ms. Hoiler and Mistaken will talk about and share, but these students, who for the first time this year are being recognized, we felt that it was important for them to be on display tonight, so that you can see that we are focusing on a whole array of ways in which we can recognize the talents of students, and this is one of them. So, thank you, Ms. Hoiler, and thank you, Modern Language Department, Ms. Dakin.
Ms. Dakin, come up and explain the quite frankly, grueling process for these students. I was just laughing, because it was a lot of work for the students and the faculty involved. One of the things that they had to do, they had to put together a very intensive presentation and present to faculty, administration, even those of us who don't speak multiple languages, and present in both English and either Spanish or Italian, and they did a fantastic job. And Karen Dakin, she's not going to talk about how wonderful she is, but I will. She did an amazing job pushing us forward with this, and when we were-- when some of us were just ready to give up, she was like, no, we're going to keep going, and she opened up a Google Classroom for the students who participated, and she very keenly funneled it down to the nine very gifted students that we're going to present certificates to today, and at graduation, they'll be wearing cords.
Good evening. When I think about our nine New York State Seal of Bilinguality recipients, I am reminded of something I heard when I became an ENL teacher many years ago. To learn a language is to have one more window from which to look at the world. It is an honor to be standing here tonight alongside nine amazingly talented students. It is an honor to be standing here tonight alongside nine amazingly talented, biliterate, some multiliterate students to introduce this incredible opportunity that the New York State Seal of Biliteracy affords our high school students. Only nine percent of high schools in New York State offer the Seal of Biliteracy at the present time. The distinction is one that is not easily earned. To apply for it, a student must have a high intermediate level of proficiency in both English and a world language with accomplishments such as completing 11th and 12th grade ELA courses within eighty-five percent or higher, passing a college-level world language course with an eighty-five percent or higher, scoring an eighty percent or higher on a New York State's Regents exam in ELA Common Core, and as Mrs. Hoiler spoke about before, presenting a digital portfolio of scholarly essays and other writing to a committee, and not an easy one, I might add, in English and/or a world language. The students that you will meet this evening have met these requirements in order to earn the New York State Seal of Biliteracy. And the diversity of this group of students represents our world. We have students who were born in the United States that are native English speakers, who decided to pursue a world language, students who were born in other countries who have chosen to perfect their native language, and students whose parents are from other countries who have pursued yet a third language. We were so impressed with their presentation to the committee that we have invited them to return next year to be an integral part in next year's selection process of our New York State Seal of Biliteracy recipients. I have to say though, that this process would not have happened this year without the leadership and the collaboration of the following professionals at Brewster High School and Henry H. Wells Middle School. Antonio Franze, Carmen Campos, Melanie Casellas, Filomena Carrero, Tracy Villaverde, Nisi Russo, Rob Loalgo, Jessica McCann, Yannir Wickers, Noel Lewis, Deborah Velascas, and also, of course, Nikki Corler and the entire district office administration. So, John, Diego, Alana, Jackie, Erin, Victor, Jamonica, Alondra, and Amelia. You have paved the way as leaders in creating new windows for future students at Brewster High School from which to view the world, and I thank you for that.
Alondra Zias. Jamonica Warren. Victor Ovansov. Alana Torres Tredor. Erin Lennon. John Delgaw. Diego Romero. Amelia Colman. And Jaclyn Rodriguez. And that is our first cohort of biliterate Brewster High School graduates.
I always have to follow the cute kids and the artwork and the congratulations and then there's me. Well, I am happy to say this is actually the last section in our policy section. The policy committee is still working on a couple of policies, but they've been working very hard with Michelle and Chatty. So, this is the 5,000 section, it's the last section. And it has to do with a lot of the student issues, dress code, extracurricular activities, student athletics, things such as that. There's only a few policies, even though there's a lot of policies in the entire section, there's only a few that actually have to go to the policy committee. So, that first policy would be fifty-one, fifty-four, your current policy on assignments of students to class. We're actually recommending that you implement the new Erie Wombosie's policy, which covers student evaluation, promotion, and placement. That will include some of the new language based on the Common Core and the fact that you can include grades through A, E, I, and MAP scores as the only means of promotion or retention of students, along with some additional language there. Then we have policy fifty-two hundred, which is currently called co-curricular and extracurricular programs. We're recommending that you implement some new language on extracurriculars. There's some language here about eligibility to attend extracurriculars or participate in athletic games if you are suspended or otherwise disciplined during the school day. And also some suggested language to consider for the policy committee about whether the district will exercise editorial control over student publications within the district. Then we have policy fifty-two ten, which is student organizations. We're recommending that you consider including some language here, again, the same language about participation in extracurricular activities in the event that students are suspended from school. Policy fifty-two eighty is called interscholastic athletics. We recommend that you keep the language from this policy regarding the district's mission with regard to student athletes, but otherwise implement Erie Wombosie's language regarding sports and the athletic program, we just found it to be more comprehensive. So, that's a recommendation for the committee to consider. The next couple of policies just have to do with formatting changes. You currently have separate policies on student disciplines, student due process rights, and we recommend that you put them together and format them the way that Erie Wombosie's formats its policy on student suspensions. Same thing, you have a couple redundant policies right now, fifty-three thirteen point three, student suspension, and fifty-three fourteen, corporal punishment. Again, we're recommending that you merge some of that language together into one. We have then policy fifty-four twenty, which is on student health services. I find this is a policy that, this is the most revised policy anywhere. The regulations and the statute in terms of, for example, whether the district can stock albuterol or EpiPens and who they can administer or can't administer them to and what rules govern that have changed recently, so we recommend addressing that. There's also some recommended language on self-administration of medication for the older students, as well as some information or language about whether you'll stock nebulizers and inhalers for non-patient-specific use. So, that's all to consider and probably should be run by the school nurse and the school physician. And that's it, the rest of them can go, come straight to the board. Any of those who missed this statutory or don't need any additional consideration. So, that is it.
Well, thank you so much for your persistence and help.
You're welcome.
We appreciate it.
No problem, thanks for having me.
Oh, I didn't have any hope for this.
Anytime you want to talk about policies, you can come to a policy committee meeting. It's a lot of fun. Or you can give me a call.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Okay, now we turn our attention to, it looks like we got all the heavy hitters in the house tonight, to our construction update. I see frightening in the house, okay, indeed, welcome and welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you?
Good. Good evening, everybody, and for having us. So, we have a new member of our team here tonight who has recently joined us in the faces of Peter Leopold, and I want to take this opportunity to introduce him. It's Frank Villing, Fred Villing.
Welcome.
Welcome. So, Fred comes, first of all, he's been with us for a few years now. He's coming off of White Plains School District where we had various successful success projects. And so, he knows some of the players from, who have contacted from that project. And so, it should be a very good, it should be a very smooth transition with him here. So, I'd like to welcome Fred. Thank you for the question.
Good morning, your team. And maybe have a quick progress report.
Okay.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Hopefully, everybody remembers me at this point. Good evening.
Good evening.
So, we were asked to bring a project update as we approach the summer of 2017. We'd like to give everybody an update for what we have accomplished on the desk over the months since the last time we've met and what we expect to do over the summer, the upcoming months. So, first we'd like to start with the project briefing. And we'll start with C D Star. Much of the workings, we've actually had a walkthrough with some of the board members recently. Much of the work on the exterior of the building, including basery, windows, and even now starting the landscaping, has come to completion. So, there's about ninety-five percent completed, if not further, with the exterior building and structure. The interior building, the remaining work that's left is really finishes with flooring and walls and some of the AV equipment that needs to be installed. But we expect schedule-wise, as planned, to have the addition work complete by June thirty, 2017. So, we will have full off, as you can see, or at least we'll have occupancy to the building by summer recess, beginning of summer recess, which will allow the building staff to use a first-class basement and so on, so it's very good news. Moving from the new addition at C D Star, crews are expected to go on to the interior of the building for renovation work. The district will expect their new mechanical upgrades for each of the existing classrooms and the new classrooms as well, which provides the heating and cooling for, for the academic spaces and some of the office spaces. So, very good news, some of that equipment has already been put in place over the past couple of months. Some of the final tie-ins take place over the summer of 2017. So, that project is on schedule at this point and is in with the budget, as expected. Moving on from our meanwhile at JFK, the new classroom addition is coming up to speed very quickly. You can see the exterior shell of the building, the classroom addition, which has taken place over the past few months, structure-wise. We have basery in place, we are actually starting the interior framing of walls for classrooms. Some of the millwork has already been, rough millwork has already been seen being installed. Mechanical electrical plumbing as well, roughing work, which is all behind walls and so on, is being put in place in the new addition alongside with some structural work that takes place at the new library and cafeteria addition. Once we approach the twenty-third, I'm sorry, the twenty-sixth of June, crews will vigorously jump into the existing building where we'll see much of the demolition and renovation work take place in the existing classrooms and the auditorium and in the roundouts that's existing there. So, we expect this summer to be a very, very fast-paced summer construction-wise, but it is, it is still at this point on schedule and expected to be on schedule for completion of August thirtieth, 2017. Additionally to JFK, we have the concession stand, which everybody's excited for. It's been moving along quite a bit over the past couple of months. The concession stand right now is left to interior workover. We expect no reason to hold back an opening for the fall sports season, which completion date is expected for the August thirtieth, 2017 date as well. Finally, everybody's, probably the most excited ones, is in the ship office renovation. The board has approved four contracts, four prime contracts to work on the cap lock upgrades and new wheelchair addition at the district office, which is expected actually to have a shovel putting around next week. So, we will start to see mobilization occur very shortly. Interior work will not start until the summer recess. But that is, interior work is expected to be completed by mid-August and the exterior wheelchair renovation or addition is expected to be complete September, the end of September, 2017. So, we have a couple of pictures just to run through if you haven't been on the sites or seen any of the pictures from the classrooms. We'll start off with the southern facade of C D Star. You can see some of the beautiful curtain wall assemblies and the brickwork that's taking place there. Today, what you'd see is actually some of, this picture was taken a few days ago, with some of the site work coming up to speed as far as sidewalk installation and so on and a little bit more, a little bit more access or storefront work at one of the entry banks. This is one of the, this is the actual heat pump farm that will serve the cooling and heating functions for the upcoming 2017, 2018 academic year and thereon. So, the interior shots of millwork going on are being installed in the new classroom addition and the new stairwell that will serve both the first and second floor. And then on to JFK, the exterior facade facing the western, facing west and northeast. This is really a good perspective of what the new addition, the classroom addition is going to look like. And you can actually see just how far it's come over the past few weeks and especially the walkthrough that was performed by the board just a few weeks ago where it perfectly sits, is now. Interior picture of one of the classrooms showing some of the blue lamb beans, which are those wooden beans above head and some of the rough framing going in place. And that good old concession stand that we can't wait for at this point. It was very attractive and is just waiting some final interior work at this point, some plumbing work. And then it's final tie-in, so everyone's excited for the fall 2017 schedule. So, that is it. As of right now, we are expecting a very, very quick summer, a very fast-paced summer. So, there's going to be a lot going on here. The next time that we meet, we'll see a lot come up from, from the ground in regards to the renovation work at JFK and at C D Star and E D. to the renovation work at J F K and at C D Star, and we plan to be a very, very successful summer. So, I'll hand it off to Russ and to Joe Riley. I know there's a few additional work items that we want to look at after this, after this session, so I appreciate it, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. We don't have a lot to add, but we're hoping you like the way it's coming out, we're pretty excited by it. It's not over till it's over, we get that, and I'm still involved with Joe Riley, Sarah Harris, Stephanie Kuehl, and Sue Davidson, so we're following through with every paint color, every roof drain, every gutter, every leader, there's still a lot for your architecture to make sure it comes out right, but we're really excited by it, especially seeing C D Star and J F K coming together, very innovative designs, it's a real 21st century school, and we think it's a compliment, we still get lots of compliments at Wells Middle School from the entire region, and we think that the work at C D Star and J F K is going to match and really serve the rural community, and it's a great decision to fund this project. We do think it's going to be a hectic summer, and I would just warn you from thirty years of wisdom on the final summer of a major capital project, something will happen that we don't expect. Stay calm, we're good. And you have some change orders in front of you, and we're happy to ask questions on them, I know the very capable Joe Riley has negotiated them pretty hard, and he briefed you in executive session, and would say that summer coordination issues, not the greatest, but you're getting good value for them, and the other things are, J F K is an old building, and we're finding more and more things about that, and that's probably going to be the source of some things this summer, but the most important thing is financially, in the big picture, you are in excellent shape, you're on schedule, your overall project is under budget, and I wish I could say that to every school board.
Exactly. And the first three action items, we'll take care of those.
Let us know if you have any questions.
Will be right here. And so without further ado, we will move into action items. Action item number one concerns the approval of these named changes for J F K, we'll do J F K ones first and Brewster High School ones second, and I guess Mr. Carlson, you will be conducting our way through here.
Yeah, as Russ, as Russ mentioned, these change orders have been reviewed by both Triton and K G D, negotiated with contractors down, and we're presenting them tonight to the board's approval.
Okay, fine. We'll take a motion, please, from the board, your consideration of this action item. Thank you, Ms. Neeson, thank you, Ms. O'Brien, Mr. Dake, you better up the number two. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, the motion passes. Action item number two concerns the approval of change orders for Brewster High School. Mr. Carlson?
These change orders represent the final change orders for Brewster High School project. After the board is able to approve them, we can then file our final cost report, which initiates our state aid flow.
That makes sense, and Mr. Dake, are you ready to make that motion? There you go, I'm looking for a second down there, Ms. Kakal, thank you so much. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, the motion passes seven zero. Action item number three concerns the approval of agreement with K G D Architects, the design of J F K H B A C system.
As Russ mentioned earlier, we're in good shape with the project budget, which will allow for us to install H B A C upgrades at J F K elementary. This contract simply allows K G D to move forward with the design, it doesn't commit the district to rewarding contracts, that will happen sometime in the fall or winter of 2017, at that point, the J F K, the bulk of the work will be completed, and we'll have a much clearer picture of our project budget stance.
I see, okay, we're coming down the home stretch this year, for sure. So I need a motion, I'm looking down to the left side there, thank you very much, Ms. Nielsen, and thank you, Ms. Kakal. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, the motion passes seven zero, with three for three, let's keep the momentum going here. Action item number four, the approval of easement with NICEC for installation of new transformer at J F K.
Yeah, this is a standard agreement that allows NICEC to do these things, so that if there are ever any issues, they're able to enter the property, make repairs to the future transformer.
Okay, this works. We'll take a motion, please, your consideration of this action item, and you have it, Ms. Dake and Ms. O'Brien. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, the motion passes seven zero. Number five concerns the approval of the facilities rental agreement with St. Lawrence Old School School for summer food service program. And again, I guess, Mr. Carlson?
Yes, this is the rental agreement for the St. Lawrence Old School School, which will allow us to operate our summer food service program. The rates being charged are the same rates that apply to our Policy 1500, these facilities as recommended by our tenants.
Okay, so we'll take a motion, and a second, and a few recent discussions. Motion by Ms. Nielsen, seconded by Ms. Kakal. Questions or comments from the board? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Kakal.
She's actually, should you get a mic? You know, is that a visiting?
So, so the question that was asked was who will actually be distributing the food, and that would be Brewster Central School District staff. So we're simply using the facility as a location site, as a distribution site, and the reason why the site is located at St. Lawrence Old School School is because with the state's program, we have to operate within a certain location that has a high population of free-reduced lunch eligible students. The reason why the program is in place to exist is because of that identified location, identified by the New York State Child Nutrition Program.
I also mentioned that.
That you've heard during our budget presentations that we have, as of this year, the sixteen-seventeen, well, the seventeen, sixteen-seventeen school year, a free-reduce rate of twenty-nine percent. I looked at the most recent data for seventeen-eighteen, that's gone up to thirty-one percent. So that's approximately a thousand students in our school district that qualify for free-reduced lunch. We have not had a meal program, so that, the significance that Mr. Carlson and Ms. Ash applying and making this available is incredibly important. If our families did have this available, and as we know, this is, you know, kind of not a, you know, a prophetic statement, children don't become less hungry over the summer, you know, they don't become less needy over the summer, and there are two months for which we don't provide, they don't have lunch, breakfast or lunch, that's, makes it possible for their families to succeed, or to succeed, to survive, to get to the next sort of place in their financial lives. So this program is really, really important, and if, if I recall correctly, Mr. Carlson, if we didn't have it here in Putnam County, there was no available site in Putnam County, our family would have to go to White Plains. So this is extremely significant, and our partnership with St. Lawrence is also a wonderful partnership to have, because they have the facility, and that's, as Mr. Carlson indicated, the red zone for the highest level of poverty in our, in the area of Brewster Central Schools.
Could you just also go over the costs, I think there was some question about that earlier, maybe say just associated with the grant and how it's covered?
I could think that. So the, the summer food service program is a program operated under New York State Child Nutrition, the same program that we operate our school year program. This program is set up so that there's no costs to the district, no costs to the taxpayers, that we're to operate at a, at a break-even, and in fact, the program, this summer, based on our assumptions of our free-reduced population, should actually operate at a small profit for a lot of the better work, despite all, you know, despite the food costs, the rental costs, and the staffing costs, we're still projecting that the program will operate better than a break-even.
And that comes from the specific grant?
Meal program, right? This was your meal program?
Yeah, New York, New York State reimburses us, we provide New York State with, with meal counts, and New York State has a rate that they reimburse us for, for those meal counts. So again, as Dr. Henny mentioned, there's a high concentration of free-reduced eligible students in this location, so as they, you know, as we provide them with meals, we then report to the state the number of meals served, and the state then reimburses us a, you know, rate per meal served to cover our costs.
But yours is breakfast and lunch?
This is a breakfast and lunch program, operating from, I believe, eight-thirty a.m. and so on.
And it's just for students that are enrolled in the school district?
It, it is not just for students enrolled in the school district, although that's obviously the target audience, it could be the location of, you know, of the serving area, but the state program is a no verification program, so there's no need to show any, any student I D or any other means of I D, it's open to anyone under eighteen.
And you may have to be Brewster or Southeast residents?
Do not have to be Southeast residents, the, the assumption from New York State is that they are, but again, it's a, it's a no verification program, so it's not, it's not required that they be residents of Southeast, and because there's no verification, there's no way of knowing, and, and it's irrelevant to the state, they simply want the numbers of meals served.
Do we have to reapply to New York State somewhere again?
I believe it's an annual recall.
Other questions and comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, the motion passes in the interim, thank you all. Action item number six concerns the acceptance of a tax refund. That's good news, I guess?
Yeah, um, nope, not good news for us. It's a, a small refund, just over a thousand dollars, to a petitioner who challenged their assessment.
Okay, well, we'll talk. We'll take a motion, please, your consideration of the tax refund. Thank you, Ms. Kakal, thank you, Ms. Nielsen. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, the motion passes seven zero. Action item number seven is the approval of the 2016-17 internal audit report, and the focus area was on capital projects, we had a couple of those.
I'd say so, so the Audit Committee last, last fall, I believe, urged our internal auditors to take a closer look at our accounting and also our operation of the capital project to make sure that all the contracts that were issued were properly bid, documented, and that we, you know, dotted all of our i's and crossed our t's. We're excited to report that our auditors found no significant items, our Audit Committee met, I believe, on May ninth, to review that internal audit report, and we are presenting it to the board's high degree approval.
Congratulations, because there was a lot there to be accountable for.
Absolutely, and it was noted in the Audit Committee meeting that it's, it's important to, to show the community that we're spending the project budget well and responsibly, and now we have an internal audit to prove, and so we're very happy about that.
Well, thank you again, your team worked very hard to keep it accountable. We'll take a motion, please, your consideration of this item. Thank you, Mr. Dake, thank you, Ms. Neeson. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, the motion passes seven zero. Action item number eight concerns the approval of retainer Thomas, Joanne, Waxman, Pettit Droop, and Mail. Those are our lawyers.
This is our annual retainer with our attorneys, it's important to note that the rates remain unchanged from last year and for the past several years.
It's also important to note, too, that these folks have provided excellent service to Brewster, they are loyal, they're extremely professional, and always available, and this day and age, that's worth its weight in gold. They certainly know our system, and they have supported us. Take a motion, please, your consideration of this action item. Thank you, Ms. Kakal, and thank you, Ms. Nielsen. Is that going to be a new firm also, Kakal and Nielsen? All right. Questions or comments concerning this item?
I can leave a question.
Yes, ma'am?
I was asking this question, I think I was. Do we need to fill in all of the, yeah, each year, for new returnees or, or just to just hold it back or renew whatever we have?
I can, I can begin here, so as far as I know, Ms. Kakal can help out. So the question was, and it's a very good question, the R F P process for these services, and actually, I said these services, because it's not just legal, it would also be for auditors, and it would be for architectural firms, so the suggested best practice is to put an R F P out no more than five years, in five-year cycles.
Yeah, absolutely, every five years, it's encouraged that you put out an R F P, but it's important to note with professional services that it's not solely based on, on cost, I should say, the selection process isn't solely based on cost, and there are other things to consider when selecting, you know, both audit services and legal services, is the quality of the, the firm providing those services, and as Dr. Janbord mentioned, our attorneys have provided us with high-quality service for the past few years, but it's absolutely something that we can consider in the future if the board chooses.
Sometimes I say, somebody asked me that question, and I couldn't answer it.
That's a good question. In fact, it's, it's very relevant to this day and age, given what happened out in Moscow. So what does that mean? It means the state controller's office really doesn't want you forming cozy relationships that are never reexamined. Okay, other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, motion passes seven zero. Action item number nine, the approval of contracts for instructional services with A, the Westchester Intersectional Children Incorporated, B, A M I C, otherwise known as Clarity, and Green Chimney School, and these are annual contracts that we revisit at this time, I believe.
Yes, these are annual contracts for our special needs students.
That's true. Okay, so we'll take a motion, and we can discuss it if you'd like thereafter. Thank you, Ms. Pastman, thank you, Ms. O'Brien. Questions or comments by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, the motion passes seven zero. Action item number ten concerns the approval of a memorandum of understanding with the Y M C A, Mr. Carlson?
Actually, it's mine.
Oh, that's true, okay, sorry.
So when the Board of Education approved the Brewster Community Learning Center, one of the goals of that program was to have, to offer programs to children as well during the summer and during the course of the school year. The Y M C A contacted me in February requesting to meet to explain some of the programs that are currently in existence in Mayo Pack and in Solmers, which are two districts that they currently have programs in, both for summer and during the course of the school year. At the same time, we received a grant, a community set-a-site grant, which is one of two awarded in this region by New York State on the basis of our increases in the numbers of low-income families in the district. And the grant is very specific into, in terms of not only providing programming for that particular group of young people and their families, but also to include mental health and physical health supports and services. So what the Y does and has been doing in White Plains, for example, is it's partnered with White Plains Hospital to provide health screenings for diabetes, for high blood pressure, wellness kinds of clinics and so forth, visual screenings, and as a 503B organization, it can actually do that. That partnership in, for the purposes of their work here in Brewster will be very similar, they will work with a group of families who, at this point, ninety-one children are enrolled in the Y M C A program that will start running the end of June and go through pretty much all of August. We subsidize those, the enrollment through the use of this community set-a-site grant, which is specified in its purpose, and I shared that with the board, and that's available on the state website, you know, for anyone who'd like to review it. It's probably not going to be given again, so we really want to make sure that we do with the grant intentions, which is to create sustainable programs and partner with organizations that will offer us an opportunity to write grants, and that's exactly what we're doing with the Y in preparation for future services. In addition, the Y will make sure that for any family that's receiving social services, that they advocate for that family, so that that family receives or can at least receive partial scholarship to be able to participate in the program if they can. There are some families who don't qualify for free- There are some families who don't qualify for free reduced lunch and who don't make enough or aren't able to participate in the social services or the Department of Social Services. So they're also in need, and so the Y will do its best to make sure that they provide opportunities for them. As I said, for the entire budget season, we've only talked about increases in our demographics. And that's a pretty significant increase. And if this wasn't available, these families would not have this opportunity. So I strongly suggest that we agreed to the MOA by making this available to these families. This is an opportunity for these youngsters to have two months of additional assistance where they are interacting, where involved in all kinds of activities. The other thing that the Y does when it does work in communities is that it does not, it looks at what the other services are in the community. For example, there are recreational programs, both in Mayo Pack and in Somers. And what the Y does is that it's not interested in competing with those. It looks very carefully at the programs that are offered and makes certain that they're not replicating those offerings. So that's something that we really appreciated because we did not want to come in and I did not want them to come in and to compete with other organizations, but instead create other kinds of offerings that would be helpful to the community.
Thank you for clarifying that. We'll take a motion, please, and make a discussion on it. Ms. Kukal and Ms. Nielsen. Questions or comments from the board?
The contract says before and after school programs. What does that look like?
It's whatever they currently offer in places like Mayo Pack and Somers. So they, again, they look at what's offered in the recreational programs and decide what is available. So, for example, it wouldn't be in all buildings. They'd be wherever there isn't an existing program, and they would offer that. And they would also try to align themselves with the work that we're doing. So they are very aware of our strategic coherence plan. They've read it. And they're trying to also integrate some of those STEM offerings, you know, as part of what they participate in.
To what we do and what we do to offer.
Right, it's the same way that Mayo Pack and Somers operates.
I'm sorry, I need to clarify a question. Because the contract goes from May to May, and I need to remember after-school and before-school programs, which we already have. Will they supplement the program or will they take the place of the programs that we have now?
What I just said is that they will look at what's offered, and they will not replace anything nor duplicate anything. They absolutely are not here to do that. They're not here to compete with any other organization. They're here to supplement by looking at what's available and where they can fill in gaps, especially for a population that can't afford certain programs.
And my other question was, obviously, there's a lot of folks here that are in the and which I absolutely think that's a good thing that we're doing. My question was, we already have a program at St. Lawrence and now a program at the Y. I mean, at Wells, the Y is running the lunch program. How are those things going to, you know, go hand in hand? I mean, maybe their kids are going to get breakfast at St. Lawrence and then lunch at?
No, it's a different population of children in the village. Because as Victor described, it's not just for children of Brewster. So the children who will participate in the program at Wells will be children who, you know, it could be certainly any of our children, any child enrolled in Brewster, but it certainly could be a student who goes to another school district.
And I don't mean to be the dead horse, but I think you both have asked this question. All this is at no cost to our taxpayers?
The community set aside grant. The community set aside grant that was only given to Brewster and Peekskill. Peekskill got more than we did, but Brewster did get some that allows us to offer this. It's our belief that it will not happen again. So we have to make sure we build a sustainable model where we can show that we are pursuing grants and partnering with other organizations that have similar missions so that we can continue this for our families.
Valerie, a quick question for you. I have been asked by parents if the Y is just a full-day program or if they offer half-day programs. Do you know a little bit about that?
Sure. They offer a nine-to-five program. They also offer a nine-to-one program, so families have a choice. They also offer across the eight weeks that are available. Parents can choose whichever week they are interested in. And they can choose some that from nine to go, some that they enroll their children in from nine to one and some that they enroll their children in from nine to five. They also have pre-care and post-care, so for any family that needs to drop their child off before the program starts at nine, they have that available at a very reasonable cost. And they also offer post-care for any family that can't get to the program at five o'clock and needs to stay until six-thirty perhaps.
Sorry, turn to the other direction. My hair is not supposed to use to be. Did you say at an additional cost?
At a nominal cost.
At a nominal?
Nominal cost.
Or above?
Exactly. Yeah, for example, thirty-five dollars a week for pre-care and thirty-five dollars a week for post-care.
And just one last comment, you know, take it. I don't mean it in a critical way, but I think that it may have been nice when the district was considering working with the Y if we perhaps at least sat down with the Town Recreation Program and Green Chimneys, who also does some of this stuff, to just discuss with them.
Well, we have a meeting scheduled this Thursday, and as I said, the Y reached out to me. I didn't go after them.
No, I understand that, but, you know, we could, but at least.
But I also, I just want to follow up on that comment, Bertie, about mine.
Sure.
You know, I've had my children go to Green Chimneys, and there is a cost to it. And I've had my children go to town rep programs, and there's a cost to that, too. I think personally, this fills a real need for a population that cannot otherwise go to any summer camps. So I don't think we need to look at this as a competition type of thing. I think it's a real, I think it actually covers every child in the district. So I'm personally very proud that this is here.
I don't disagree with you, Ms. Nielsen. All I'm saying is that I think it might have been nice if, before Eback Act came out or whatever, that the district just sat down with the other entities to just discuss what we were planning on doing. That's all I'm saying. I totally agree with you. I think the food program is a necessity, and I think it's really a great thing. That's all I'm saying, is that, you know, it might have been nice discussion was made before we went in and discussed it. I'm totally in favor of it.
Okay, so I think we have a motion. It's been seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor. The motion passes seven to zero. Last but not least, and you have all got a dear thong farewell for this item, I know. Try to create some separation here. Action item number eleven pertains to the approval of the last pass of policies. We'll take a motion, please, for your consideration in this group. Thank you again, Mr. Kukal and Ms. Nielsen. Questions or comments from the board? I don't know, you want to know what we're going to do next week? Eight times over?
I don't know, I have.
Okay. All those in favor, the motion passes seven to zero. Thank you for your diligence on the policy conversion. Next page is the Consent Agenda. We'll take a motion, please, for your consideration of the Consent Agenda. Ms. O'Brien and Mr. Deegan. Yes? Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Misinterpreted that. You're right. So Ms. O'Brien and Ms. Zieke, thank you both. Questions or comments from the rest of the board? Seeing none, all those in favor. The motion passes six to zero, one refusal. And now, board remarks. The floor is yours, ladies and gentlemen.
I just wanted to welcome and say congratulations. I think we have two people in the audience here. Carrie Cunningham and Glenn Niles are two newly elected board members who, and the audience is packed, so if you could stand up and wave. I'm sorry for embarrassing you. I just wanted to say welcome on behalf of the board, and we are looking forward to working with you starting July eleventh, when you are officially sworn in. And please do, you know, like I said, reach out to me, and we will chat some more about upcoming events.
Thank you for questioning that. Other questions?
I had the privilege of attending the National Honor Society at Moses for the, gosh, I'm so sorry, CTE students. And I call that a privilege. You know, this is, as Dr. Hennig mentioned, you know, this is work that we do. But getting to shake hands with a hundred students who are inducted into the Honor Society for a passion and things that they love.
Sure.
And one was Brewster. You know, I get to say yay, so thank you for that privilege that I get to do that. And thank you all for sharing your students with us, because that just, it puts a smile on my face. I get to say thank you, congratulations, and so I thank you. But it was a wonderful event. And again, it was a privilege to see that sea of students inducted into the Honor Society.
You bet. Other board comments? Sure, Ms. Zieke?
So I just want to comment. Valerie was the guest speaker at the Laura Hudson Council of Administrative Women in Education. I had to write that down as well. And I was able to look, sorry, I was able to be there, but I was able to look at your presentation, and I thought it was a great representation of what we're doing here in this district, and I wanted to thank you. And then I started thinking, I know that in the near future, we're going to have a big cap of the year going forward, but maybe, you know, your presentation along with that, some combination that can be posted to our site so people can have, because it was just so to the point and clear. And thank you for sharing with us what we're doing. But yes, just wanted to share that, and thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the board? No, we're good for now. Okay, so we move to our last topic of the night, which is public remarks and information. And the floor is yours, ladies and gentlemen. And are you still, yes, ma'am?
Hi, Patty Helfer.
Hi, Patty, how are you?
I'm all right. I just want to couple off of what Bertie said about the whole YMCA thing. I do think we're making some really great moves. But I think as a courtesy to our neighbors, it would have been probably a really good idea to have a discussion. Just, I know at Green Chimneys, for instance, they're very concerned about what's going on with the YMCA. And when you call the district office to try and find out, you don't find out.
Right.
And it just reads ill will instead of goodwill. And I think having a little, just a little face-to-face, a little phone call courtesy thing would have been a pretty good idea.
You're probably, I mean, probably, you're right. And twenty twenty?
Did you say that out loud?
Huh?
Did you say out loud?
You're right. But what I'm trying to say, too, is with hindsight now, we will be more informed as we move forward, certainly. Yeah, collaboration, collaboration, collaboration is the key. And that means communication. So we can make that adjustment. Thank you, yes, ma'am?
I first would like to say congratulations, Dr. Janbord. I couldn't have been a better person to receive that award. I think that's wonderful.
Thanks.
Congratulations. I love to see the steps that we take with the foreign language that we take it to the next level. That would be great. It was kind of less than the star.
Really.
And I really do love the idea with the foreign language. And I was very impressed with all the wonderful students and their accomplishments. And when the medical ones get their license, I want to know, I'll be their first paid.
Okay, then.
And also, I thoroughly enjoyed the Harlem Wizards playing against them, even though I almost scored four. But I really enjoyed that. And I love, I don't know how to say this, the humanitarian approach that this district has taken and filling the gap that, one of the many gaps that Hudson County has. Thank God for the Brewster Schools. I think it's a great example for our students, because we're always preaching this type of thing.
Sure.
And I know in Wells, every month we had a meeting. So I think this is a wonderful example to show, you know, practice what you preach.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Stacy Demian, and I'm the Assistant Director at Green Chimneys Summer Camps. And I also wanted to state my concern and interest in learning more about the programs for one basic, simple reason. The mission at Green Chimneys is, well, we believe that every child deserves camp. And what was not brought up today is what the other camps in this community, not just Green Chimneys, Camp Hurlic, Camp Com, Patterson Raff, scholarship programs. Green Chimneys offers over thirty thousand dollars in scholarships to Brewster kids every single summer. I run that program, and I have scholarshipd over a hundred, offered over a hundred kids scholarships this summer to a cost where they can afford camp. Only one family has come back and is not able to send their child to camp this summer. In addition to that, Green Chimneys gives discounts to Brewster Central School District children. Be camp, the philosophy behind it, for daycare reasons. For multiple sessions, six and nine weeks, they're saving up to four hundred and twenty-five dollars. That is not based on income, it's not based on free lunch. It's based on us wanting kids to have camp as an experience. So what we ask is that there is communication here, because our scholarship program right now is targeting the same kids that this YMCA program is. So there are many kids that we have scholarship for camp that could have benefited from this YMCA. And we could have re-targeted our dollars toward that next tier, those families who don't, can't, do not get free and reduced lunch. But I can scholarship because they make a little bit too much money.
Mm-hmm.
So we ask for communication. We want to make sure that our scholarship dollars are going to kids that need it and have no other option in this community. And if YMCA is going to fill one level, we want to make sure that we're focused on that next tier of families that maybe don't qualify for that, but also cannot afford the cost.
That sounds fair enough. Yes, ma'am?
So far, the Y has only registered ninety-one children. We have a thousand children who receive free reduced lunch. So there's no way, there's no expectation that one program is ever going to be able to serve that number of children. So of course, there needs to be partnerships, and the same organizations that provide that should continue to. So there's no way that any one program can serve one thousand students. And so I, you know, I want to make sure it's clear that the Y is one part of a large collection of opportunities that are available to families. And, you know, there was communication that did go out. There was a letter that went out announcing the registration night. I, you know, that certainly will be, you know, we'll try to better communicate. And if we need to organize a meeting that includes all the groups in the county, we can certainly do that. I'm meeting with Ms. Borden this Thursday to further review what we're doing. But certainly, if you ever have any question, it's important to call me and, you know, to ask me if there's something that I can help clarify. This has started quickly. It's been a one-woman show to try to do this. So, you know, things do happen when you're trying to do things quickly and trying to kind of need a timeline. So whatever might not have happened, don't assume that it's done from malice. It's just a matter of trying to do things quickly so that we can take advantage of this opportunity.
And thank you. And then we agree that there are numerous families, plenty of families, that we're not struggling to get the kids that we need to camp. We just want to make sure that the funding that we get for scholarships, that we continue to work to make sure that every child in this community has an opportunity to go to camp if they want to go to camp. And there might be a thousand kids out there. I can tell you I review one hundred percent of the scholarship applications I get. And every single one hundred percent that qualify at a certain income level were offered scholarship money this summer. So we're not turning kids away either at this point.
Okay, so we'll build better communication moving forward. Yes, ma'am?
I just have a silly question. I have a special needs child who lives here. And we're talking about the Y and everything. Does that also recruit special, special needs also?
They don't, they don't recruit anyone.
Oh, they don't? Because I was thinking of even signing, my daughter goes to summer school here for, who she has. But my thing was, I was going to get her either parents' community or spec writing up in, up late. I don't know if they have scholarships or anything like that, or anything to help out families. I don't know if you can go through, I'm just up front as an expert. If the board could do it, I don't know. That's what I'm asking.
Well, I think that's part of the partnerships. And there's quite a group of people in the back that I'd also ask you to talk to to see if they could, you know, they potentially have any resources. I'd be happy to give you the contact for the Y so that you could follow up there as well.
Okay.
Okay. Other questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, I think there are motions. Seeing none, I can hear a motion. Again?
I think we have a motion to adjourn. We have a meeting that we're trying to.
Okay. Okay. That makes sense. So I have a motion. I have a second, Ms. O'Brien. All those in favor? Seven to zero. We're heading off to exec. Have a great night, folks.